Two ways to create economic changes in families and the two fastest ways to do that is a great job in education. And so those are some of the areas that we're going to be focusing on. But we also have some exciting opportunities that are coming down the road. We've had multiple visits with a company by the name of Ecor. Myself, the judge has been on a few of these calls. We've been on calls with their attorney and it's been exciting to hear about the opportunities that they're laying out, that Wilson County residents could benefit from. So what they've done is they selected fifty-two acres at the Mission Rail Park. And so this fifty-two acres happens to reside in Barak County. But if you see a picture of Mission Rail Park in your handouts, it kind of shows you that eighty percent of all that property resides in Wilson County. Only about twenty percent resides in Barak County. So there's a picture in your packet that kind of shows you where that county line is. Now, if you'll go to the next slide, we're right there, okay? So what they're planning on doing is they're building a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot manufacturing facility. Estimated employment's going to be about one-hundred-and-forty staff. Will operate twenty-four-seven and they're doing this with about a hundred billion private equity that they've already raised and then a hundred billion for an application to the Texas Bond Review Board. Before I move on, I wanted to talk about that just briefly. The Texas Bond Review Board is an entity at the state of Texas. The governor is part of that entity, the state comptroller, attorney general, and then of course other folks at the state level. But they do review applications that come in for opportunities like this from companies like this trying to finance their venture. And so we go to the next page and of course our next slide is Ecor Global is the company. And what I wanted to do here is just talk a little bit about what they do. They're a manufacturer. So what's been exciting about this is that there's more and more inquiries on a weekly basis with manufacturing. And you know, Texas is getting these inquiries just daily. We are now, Wilson County is now a member of the Regional Partnership, which is called Greater SATX. And they are a regional economic development partnership out of San Antonio. And they've taken the approach of a win in the region is a win for all of us. And so they've been involved with this company, so has Barak County. And there's an opportunity for Wilson County to get involved and we'll talk about that in just a moment. What they do is they manufacture a plywood alternative from ag waste, like corn stalks, cotton stalks, sorghum stalks, anything that's a waste material like that. That's what they manufacture this plywood material out of. And that can be anything from one-eighth built all the way to one-inch thickness. And of course environmentally friendly because of the fact, you'll go to the next page, the next one please. So this is just simply core ply is what they call it. And you might see that in your presentation. It shows you some string tests that they've done. And so it's very similar to plywood, but in some ways even better. And so this is more of an environmentally friendly alternative. Currently this company has manufacturing in Europe, but they're looking to come to South Texas. Originally when they started this process, they had an approval from the city of Centon. And Centon was the entity that went through the bond application process with them, with the Texas Bond Review Board. They were issued a hundred million. But then after they heard about Mission Rail Park and what's going on up there and having rail access and other things available in the region, they chose to defer that and start their operation at Mission Rail Park. The next page talks a little bit about, and this is also in your packet, what industries it'll serve, well naturally home building, cabinetry, subfloor, ceilings, doors, ground building, furniture. There's a lot of need for this type of product and furniture manufacturing. And of course, that's what they'll be using a lot of that for. Once again, we'll go to the next slide. This is going to be a collaboration between Greater SATX, which is a regional economic partnership, Barak County and Wilson County. And by the way, this is not in your packet, your package is mainly about the company. There's a new, unique thing that they're willing to do. The gentleman that's actually the site selector, this guy, Ecor, who designed the location, the site, he, his background is energy and building power plants. And so what they plan on doing is having power generation on-site. He's been in communication with the gentleman at Phelps, Mr. Aaron Wagner. We've had several conversations informally, myself, that the plan is to have a meeting with him because he is getting bombarded with opportunities coming in, in various places. It's going to require more energy, of course. And so what they plan on doing is having a, a generation plant on-site that if they don't use that full amount of power, then it can be fed into either CPS or the Phelps system. A good paying jobs fifteen miles up the road. You know, as I was driving out there and we were meeting with the owners of the Mission Rail Park, I thought to myself, you know, man, wouldn't it be great? A person commuting to San Antonio could just turn a left right there in Elm Dorf and have a great job like this. And so you talk about economic benefits. So part of this might involve establishing a industrial development corporation. And all that is, is a tool that can be used to help fund projects like this. Now, one thing I want to be clear on is that this entity only acts as a conduit, conduit issuer. So there's tax advantages for the private funding of the company. The entity, Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation, does not loan us all money or guarantee the bonds. The user of the bonds, which is Ecor, would be the sole responsible party for paying those bonds. And then, you know, coordinating necessary public hearings for this entity, et cetera. Now, what I've done is I've had Mr. Lance Fox come on the phone today because I wanted him to kind of explain a little bit more about what the entity is and maybe what it is not. And then just explain and introduce himself and tell us a little bit about his background. So Mr. Fox has been involved with these types of projects. He's bond counsel for Ecor. But Mr. Fox, if you'd like to introduce yourself and just maybe explain what the process is with the industrial development corporation and then also lead into how this ties into the bond review board.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good morning and thank you, Jason, and hello commissioners and the judge. And appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. And Jason said my name's Lance Fox, I'm an attorney in Beaumont, Texas. I've been doing this for about forty years. And what he's describing is a very commonly used method in Texas. It's a program that's existed for about fifty years. And the Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation, if it's created, would have to be created by the county commissioners. And it's touching to their government. So it basically cannot act without getting approval from the county commissioners. And traditionally people have a board of directors, but most counties will appoint the existing commissioners to that board. So the board is the county commissioners. And this is all governed by something called the Texas Development Corporation Act. It's part of the local government code. And it's clearly a conduit issuer, like you stated, where that corporation has no taxing power. It has no responsibility for payment of the bonds. We call it a conduit issuer because it issues the bond under its authority that's given to it under the Development Corporation Act to issue bonds. It's often, it meets all the criteria of the Development Corporation Act for a qualified project. And so the entire strategy is designed to provide for and create and promote economic development in the state of Texas. A lot of folks are familiar with any economic development corporation, which are the same thing, that you can also have an economic, economic development corporation or industrial development corporation, those terms are used interchangeably, that are also created by counties and water authorities and other type, port authorities and other types of governmental entities for the same purposes. And so most of the counties in Texas, not all, most of the port authorities, most of the river authorities and so on will create these corporations and then they use them on a as-needed basis where a project, somebody wants to come forward with a proposed project and get help with the financing for it and go through all the criteria that has to be satisfied. And so as Jason was saying, of course, the first step would be to create the corporation. There's no cost, there's no risk due to county liability. It was simply created, we would help with the documents. We've already shared some of that with the judge, the county attorney. And those are pretty much long-form forms, their name and address, the town hall language and so on. It's created through the Development Corporation Act. And so that's the first step. And then once you have it in there, if you choose to use it and choose the approval going forward, again, there's no cost for that, but that's kind of the first step. And then as Jason was saying, then the bond review board in Texas is the state agency that oversees a number of different programs for the state, and this is one of them. And they don't actually issue the bonds. The bonds will get issued by this Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation if you go forward. But you do have to go to the bond review board and get what we call an allocation. These types of bonds, because they provide manufacturing jobs and also is considered to be a solid waste disposal facility because it's taking the agricultural waste products and providing for means of reasonable economic disposal of them. That allows those types of bonds to qualify under federal tax law as tax-exempt bonds. The same as if the county issued debt and bonds to finance county projects, which are tax-exempt bonds that have attracted investors. The private-type partners, these private-type projects can also qualify if they meet not only state law requirements, but various federal tax law requirements. So there's a handful of different types of projects that would qualify. But they serve some type of public purpose, you know, that falls under federal tax law. And one of them is solid waste disposal. So if they qualify for that, if that's the reason you have to go to the bond review board, because each year the federal government allows each state to have a certain amount of allocation available that the state can use to finance various types of projects that are available under federal tax laws. And so the bond review board has got rules and regulations where they take a total allocation that's available each year to the state and they subdivide it into about fifteen different categories of types of projects that you can apply for to seek to get one of those allocations. And this is one of them. A large part of what the bond review board allocates to are things that provide affordable housing for low and moderate income and senior citizens and all. So anyway, they have a process and program that you follow. And you have to submit paperwork to them and you submit an application for allocation that describes the project and make sure that it qualifies. And that gets filed with the bond review board and then they review it and make sure it qualifies. And then they have a lottery where they award the allocation purely by random drawing of the lottery. And each year there's a greater demand for those allocations than the available allocations. But still, most of the projects that won will eventually get approved. So that's kind of their role. They don't actually issue the bonds. Just to make it clear, the bonds are issued to the public going to an underwriter that would sell the bond to an institutional investor. Usually it's a mutual fund that you would have probably heard of that specializes in the best in the high-yield municipal tax exempt bond. There's a market out there for that, but that doesn't satisfy all the underwriting criteria. And so that's kind of the first step to go to the bond review board. Is that if you get the allocation, they will award that. And the county will be involved, the industrial development corporation working with their office will be involved. Actually, the application will get signed. The industrial development authority will be the applicant on the application identifying the Ecor project. And so they will be involved and they will see that if you give the allocation, they want it awarded, then Ecor will have five months to close on that transaction where he wears the industrial development corporation or the county, is the underwriters, everybody that's involved in it. And the main thing behind these bonds is they have to get approved. Even though you've got the allocation from the bond review board, before they can be issued, you've got three different levels of approval. Up one, you have to get the corporation to agree to issue the bond and satisfy its requirements. Then the county commissioners also have to give their approval to the actual issuance of the bond. So that's kind of a local approval. There has to be a public hearing on it, the public has to be the other bond security. And they get an opportunity to come up and speak, give comments before those decisions are made of whether to grant that approval. But that's the local approval. And then once you have that, it's Ecor's able to go forward with, you know, their plan of financing and so on. Then we have to get that transaction also approved by the attorney general of Texas, the public finance division, who has to approve any kind of government bond in Texas. If the county ever issues any kind of bond, there's certain obligations, there are obligations, you know, finance county facilities, you have to get the attorney general approval. Same is true for these types of projects. You have to satisfy all of their legal requirements. And of course, the main thing that their focus on, the attorney general does a great job, is to make sure that before we comply with all the applicable state laws, the Development Corporation Act, we have all the required language that makes it clear that either the county or the industrial development corporation have any responsibility or lack of it for the payment of the bonds. The bonds are paid solely from Ecor's project or the legal projects and so on. So that's an important part of the process. And then secondly, when you use a county industrial development corporation like this, you also have to get a second approval from the governor's office, their economic development office, and you have to satisfy their criteria. Of course, they're interested in making sure it's a viable project and it's good both for the local county and the community, also for the state. And it satisfies their criteria for creating the jobs and, you know, promoting industrial development in Texas. And they're also really good to work with and we've done a lot of projects with them. But they'll be looking at it as well, so kind of satisfy that approval. And you also have to make sure that it complies with all the federal tax law requirements to be active at bond. Thankfully, I'm kind of drifting, but if you can't satisfy the tax law requirements, if only you can meet the state law requirements for economic development and manufacturing and so on, industrial development type, that's the way that promotes economic development. We tend to be seeing these transactions where they issue what we call taxable bonds. And there's also a ability to sell those. If you do that, you don't have that allocation, but you still have to meet the attorney general requirements and the governor's requirements as well as the local county requirements for those kind of projects. But I want to say that it's something that if you don't have, you haven't done it before, there's also the, you know, you have to, you know, go through the learning process or have a clear understanding that the county has no responsibility for it. But you see a lot of these projects across the state, some counties are more active than others. Here's personally, I've done a number of projects. The last time we used, we done in Brazoria County. I don't know if you know any of those folks down there, Judge, but that's probably others. But I've had a client acquire a whole disposal facility that they had revitalized, built it free for. And they went to Brazoria County and did the exact same thing back in about 2017. And the county at that time created its own industrial development corporation act as a conduit issuer. And they had issued, I think they exactly off the top of my head, but that was about a five-hundred-million-dollar project. And so they actually issued about three different series of bonds. And in this program, the amount, the most of the allocation you can get at any one time from the state for this kind of project is a hundred million dollars. Because they can't spend all that money at once. And so they went to them the first time and issued a hundred million dollar bond. And that's for the first place of the project. And they kicked back the following year, they did another hundred million. And then they finished up with the third round of financing. So even if this project, depending on how it plays out, it's possible, you know, we could satisfy all the criteria to get it approved. But they could come back and ask you to sponsor additional bonds or, you know, additional financing of the project. I can tell you that they will have to work with a very professional, reputable underwriter to be able to sell the bonds in the market. Because that's a lot of scrutiny from a business standpoint. A bond is really no different than a loan. Just like if the county issue bonds, the financial county facility does a special type of loan, loan that loans to the county, by the business practices that you follow a legal process to do. It's the same thing with the economic and industrial development corporation. It's the same case with Ecor. The bond is really just a loan to Ecor where the corporation would issue the bond, work with an underwriter. Like, you know, I've been talking about using Truist Securities, which is a nationwide underwriter that we work a lot with and does a great job. And then their job is to make sure and find all the business and market conditions where they can get their clients, their investors, on top of some of the other big bond funds who would buy these bonds. And so the bonds get issued, those proceeds, they get loaned to Ecor to finance the project just like if you were getting a private loan from a bank. And there would be a lien on the project and all types of satisfaction for their criteria.
Mr. Fox, I don't want to interrupt, but I do want to give them a few minutes to answer some questions because we're actually kind of knocking up against the deadline.
Yeah, that was kind of a good point to kind of give them a brief overview that, yeah, if I could start the end way off.
So because this project, I say is a collaboration. The reason I say that is because Greater SATX has done a lot of work with checking the background of this company and doing some due diligence. Barak County issued a tax abatement in February of '25. And where Wilson County can come in as, as a good neighbor. We feel like that we have an opportunity to provide employment for people in Wilson County because of these jobs. And if you would, Mr. Fox, tell the commissioners why a group like this can actually even do a project and assist Barak County with a project like this. What jurisdiction would they have to do this?
Yeah, it's not, it's the state law, the Development Corporation Act will allow issuers to issue bonds to finance any kind of project that will promote economic development and employment in the state of Texas. And so you can cross your boundary lines, even though it would be formed primarily finance projects that promote economic development and employment in this county. The project can be located, particularly in a metropolitan county like that. The additional requirement when that happens is you do have to go to that county, in this case, Barak County, and have their commissioners court also say, yes, we approve this project and we're okay and consent to you issuing bond by the Wilson County Industrial Development Corporation to finance the project here. And so in the practical matter, particularly here, when you have a project that crosses state line, it's going to, our county line, you know, it would affect most counties. A lot of people that have to be employed there likely will be residing in Wilson County and so on. So there is no requirement that should restrict the county from county. That's partly the intent and the goal, the objective. But here, there'd be a clear connection between the two counties and, you know, kind of work together on it. You know, the county, in Barak County, won't really be involved in the financing or overseeing it or anything like that. They simply just have to pass a resolution telling that this project was brought into attention and, and they're okay with it because that kind of, they have it located there.
Mr. Fox, we have about five minutes. So I think what I'm going to do is just turn it over to the commissioners and the judge to let them ask any questions or maybe after they've had an opportunity to read some of the information, they could ask questions. Judge?
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you all have any questions on Mr. Fox or Mr. Talley? At this point, we have brought a hard break in ten local bids. And I'm concerned we'll return back for more discussion to this agenda.
Question, would this be a possibility for us to get rid of some of our solid waste, such as the trees that we?
You know, I don't know. That's a good question for Mr. Muller, who's the gentleman that's in the energy business. So that's a good possibility. They're going to be generating energy from thermal heat and even other manufacturers. I was talking to John Vosser, who's one of the investor owners of the railroad park. And there's another company that's wanting to come in that needs thermal heat. So naturally, they can use the steam from their power generation plant to, you know, fund that. So that's a good question. I'll call him and we'll find out. You said trees and debris that you normally would have burned.
We have a truck and a chipper where we chip up a lot of this wood. We have wood chips, they could possibly use it in this plywood or use it as thermal energy.
Well, I will definitely give the gentleman a call and we'll talk about it.
Because we're, we're burning it, right?
We are burning.
We're, we're burning it to get rid of it. So it's a waste to us and it would be helpful to the county to be able to utilize it somewhere where we wouldn't just be burning it and wasting it.
You bet. Good, good question.
Mr. Talley, so we only have it for presentation, but you're going to need it sometime. This resolution has to be approved by the court because they will be the board maker. So there's plans to come back to the court after they get a chance to read through the materials and they have some more questions.
Correct.
Another thing I'd like to understand a little bit more is this about power generation. Because that's opposite of being water needed, you know, I'm not talking about this reason. But understanding where they're going to get their water from. It appears that possibly they'll be doing a lot of the most of the number of work. But that, that would be a concern too.
You bet. Well, I did have a conversation Friday with Mr. Fox about the water concerns. And he said at this point, where the property is located for this particular group, it would be out of Elm Dorf. And they've assured him that they're, they're okay on the water supply from that angle. Now, anything on our side, the county's side, would be oak hills. And they're working together on some, I wouldn't say maybe disagreements, but making sure everybody's on the right page as it relates to this project. So, but he said he's working through it and he thinks we're going to get to a great resolution.
Mr. Talley, do you think we need to come back as we can? Want to come back to finish your?
Oh, we can. I'm going to stick around.
Okay. We can quit suspended for now. Mr. Fox, thank you very much. I'm going to let you, cut you loose. Is he gone?
No, thank you. Thank you very much, Judge.
All right, sir, thank you. I have a question for you before we get out of here. Has nothing to do with the court. All right, it's ten o'clock. We're going to suspend from agenda number sixteen. Agenda number six, we're opening bids for Wilson County, A, six A, material hauling, material plus hauling, and six B, whole gasoline.
Thank you, Judge. The first bids that I'll be opening are the flexible base material, asphalt materials and emulsion bid, which is bid packet number twenty-six dash twenty thousand. The first one is from Bobcat Materials.
I don't know. Would you repeat the name of that company?
It's Bobcat.
Bobcat.
It is Bobcat? Okay. That's what I wrote. That's what I wrote, but then I put a question mark because it was like...
Yes, the second one is Adesosa Materials.
Okay.
The next one is Aggregate Movers LLC. The next one is Colorado Materials LTD. The next one is from Ergon Asphalt and Emulsion. The next one is from EnviroTech Services LLC. The next one is from Vulcan Construction Materials LLC. The next one is from GEM Materials, Inc. The next one is from Ron Tech Materials, Inc. And the last one is from Nine O Transport and Sales, Inc. The next bid dollars in are for gasoline and diesel, bid number twenty-six dash one zero zero two. And it appears we have two of them. Mintex Oil LP. Three L USA LLC, doing business as Three L Energy Solutions. My office will, uh, put together the bid tab and then, um, present to you, uh, the bid tab for your consideration of reporting. The next one is...
Okay, we're going to resume back to the agenda schedule, back to thirteen minutes. Mr. Talley, do you want to come up and continue the honor? Are you good?
Well, if, uh, if there's any questions, uh, that, that maybe I could answer. I think that, uh, this is a unique opportunity for us in Wilson County and, and I'd like to, to see us hopefully try to assist in getting this, uh, done. I think that once we see, uh, this project in place, it could mean other projects really planning themselves there and, and really benefiting the county.
So that everybody understands, because I've asked this many times, there is absolutely no financial risk for us, none whatsoever, you know?
That's what Mr. Fox has told us. So I would tell you that once you, you know, setting up the corporation, as I've spoken with Ms. Ron on this, that's pretty simple. You know, the corporation stuff is pretty simple. Now, once you get to the point where you work with someone on the bond review board, then probably you would need to get either separate legal counsel, whatever the case might be, whatever y'all would prefer, if it made sense to do so. Um, but there's a number of firms out there that do this kind of work, just, uh, this type of, of financing. Or we might find that after review of the documents, it's pretty straightforward, but that's just something you might consider. Also think too that, um, there are opportunities that you can build in some fees in this to where if you did hire outside legal, that some of that could be covered, uh, under the project. So that's something to think about as well.
Again, this whole concept is that, that all the EDCs in the county, if we come together, we're multi-pleton.
Well, the whole, the whole purpose is to benefit citizens in the county and that is what we're trying to do.
They have the same.
We do through job creation.
What type of energy production are they going to do to, you said they were going to try to produce energy to?
What they're using is they'll be building an onsite power plant. Uh, I think it might have a one pager in your packet talks about that. Um, and they'll be using the same solid, uh, ag waste that they bring in. So what happens is, is they, uh, purchase this from farmers and ranchers in the South Texas area. It's built up and it's brought to their, uh, uh, facility there, and it's held in barns, basically full barns. And then that is used to make their product, but it will also be used to generate the, the power. So, I mean, you need...
I understand it's cotton stalks?
Cotton stalks, sorghum stalks, corn.
And they're paying the farmers sixty dollars an acre to harvest their waste.
And I'm not sure what the...
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So there'll be opportunity for some, uh, end clients being in the ag industry, um, as they harvest that waste that's normally either plowed under or shredded up. So this might be another opportunity to make, uh, a useful purpose of that.
Which I'm sure is why Sutton was the target, but...
Exactly.
Having rail access is...
Yeah, so they were, they were, uh, they were a long ways in this process, even to the point where they were awarded the hundred million dollar bond. And they can defer that. And so literally, if you Google the Texas, uh, Bond Review Board and you look at twenty twenty-four project, you can see where they were awarded, but they deferred that money. And so what that means is anybody else in the lottery with the Texas Bond Review Board will be able to pick up their funds because of that deferral. So what happens now is they have to start a new process. Uh, but based on my conversations with Stephen Muller, who is hired by Ecore Global to do the site work, they've, um, already hired their architects out of, uh, San Antonio, which is west east. The Yates Construction, which is a natural construction firm, will be their general contractor. So they've, they've done all those different pieces. It's also in your packet, it kind of, uh, shows that. And so my understanding, uh, based on everything they've shared with me, they're, they're really trying real hard to get cranked up the second quarter of twenty twenty-six and, um, be operational in two years.
So can you clarify, you said that, um, I guess they started at Sutton and they got approval, so that they, they already have that approved for the hundred million?
They had that approved.
Yes, sir. Okay, is it, it is approved and they'll apply to this project?
No, they will not apply to this project. So what happened is when they said, we're going to defer, we're not taking it, and then it goes to other projects. And so now they have to reapply for this location that they're doing here.
You know, they were not competing, but they had another big industry there that's on board with steel mill, which is, that is huge, you know, had an effect on that, but they were looking for railway, was, was there.
Sure. Anyway, well, I appreciate it, guys. We've been working real hard, having these, uh, meetings with these different entities, and I'm looking forward to seeing what the future holds because there's a lot of activity we get on a weekly basis now that we're part of the Greater SATX Regional Partnership. That actually includes Barrett County and all surrounding counties around Barrett. Wilson was one of the last counties to, uh, be part of that. But we get weekly emails, the judge is getting those as well. It's just incredible the amount of companies that are wanting to come and start manufacturing in Texas. And, and a lot of that is, um, transition to leadership in, in Washington and, and the, the case that they've opened because of, uh, tariffs in other countries. So they're wanting to come to the U.S. and have their manufacturing. So that's really exciting.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, thank you.
Done a lot of good hard work, Jason. Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, we have Commissioner Martin, who said, one, this does take action to authorize the county judge to execute a contract with LCR, total transport in the amount of two hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, fifty cents for reconstruction of Mariana Road, approved in one.
Yep, so, so I've been mentioning that's in your package, which, uh, received legit, however, is great because it did come in about five, I think it was about twenty-five thousand worth of change. Uh, this contract that we've used before can be excellent for me. Uh, so I'll make a motion to authorize the county judge to execute the contract with LCR, total transport in the amount of two hundred twenty-eight, nine fifty, fifty, for the reconstruction of Mariana Road, approved in one.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, signed by Commissioner King. Any other discussion on agenda item number fourteen? Are we still on Commissioner King?
Yes.
Is everything just...
Yeah, we have a link in your dialogue, we're going to contract out and then decide tomorrow.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Here none, I'll call for the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Loses against aye, aye, Sabbath, motion passes. Agenda item number fifteen, Commissioner Martin, Andrew, since one, discuss take action, approval of road use agreement with the city public service board.
Okay, uh, so I, I think everybody is aware that, uh, CPS is intending to reconstruct the major power line that runs through Wilson County, um, three, six, one to two. Uh, they've already started work. Um, this is, this is an important project for, for, uh, reliability, for statewide reliability. Um, so they have, they're going to be bringing in thousands and thousands, and already have brought in thousands of truck loads. They used to build a road up and down the roadway, uh, then built out their rail trucks, their cranes, everything else they need to, uh, to jump this line. So, uh, they've already damaged the roads. Um, and so we, that's why we insisted that we have a road use agreement. This road use agreement will need to be in place before we will finally issue all the permits for driveways that they need, um, and so I, we're finishing that.
Uh, so I went around with Mr. Wood, Will Wood, yes, sir, uh, third there Friday last week, he, it was Thursday, and we did look at all of our driveways, make corrections, and we did talk about this road use agreement as well. So, uh, they're, they're willing to help us and do the right thing, so...
Yeah, so, so basically, they're going to be responsible for repairing any damage that they do to our roads. Um, they are supposed to provide us with a document that shows the, quote, existing, uh, conditions. Couple places that's going to be challenging, because like I said, they've already done some significant damage, but, um, at least on the surface today, it appears that they're willing to work with us and, and maintain, uh, address any issues that we have, obtain all proper permits, uh, that they're supposed to get. And, and, uh, and this project will be about a year, uh, two years, I don't know how long it'll actually be, but two-year project.
Uh, we also discussed that if these farmers or anchors, anybody that has this permanent old group with a road going through their property, if they don't want it, CPS is, we did talk about in April, uh, last Halloween, it looks like, but they currently have that so we can put that back on our groups, you know, effectively, Mr. Martin, I, it's just, uh, so that is one thing that, you know, refurbishing that base back to the county. So I did a lot of this with the oil company.
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, I think there's more bases than all of us could call out during a reasonable period of time, so, uh, we may be available, three, six, three, four, depending. I mean, most people that I've talked to don't, don't want this left on the property, they want the road removed, uh, so it can fully clean, so it'll have some sand and probably some organic material, who knows what else in it, so it won't be new stuff, but, um, it'll certainly be, be usable.
So, so, well, this is, they're, they're rebuilding this line and it's going to be a live line as they're rebuilding it also. This is, we gotta do a lot of this, we did, uh...
Okay, so they're not going to leave, they can leave it there or they don't have to? I mean, don't they have easement with these properties?
That is up to the property owner.
So they say we want it out, so they're using this so they'll get the trucks though?
Yes.
So to do what it is?
Yes, it, well, they, they're going to work on this line no matter what the weather conditions. So they, they need all weather broke, all road through. So, but, once again, it's up to the property owner, whatever deal that they have with CPS, how that's worked out in, in the end.
Okay. I noticed that the contract says that if they have to close anything, they'll notify the emergency management coordinator forty-eight hours in advance. Y'all didn't want to be a part of that?
Yes, it...
It says, get with, uh, with us.
Yeah, well, the, the main reason is because they're really supposed to be the first line of defense when it comes to that because they're the ones that are going to put it, uh, they, they act like these things may come up frequently and regularly. Uh, I, I hope not, um, but yes, they, uh, they have, don't worry, they have Mr. King's house. You know, I'm for sure.
How many county roads does it cross?
Well, that's the list on the last couple pages. Um, it was, this was a, a really blueish color they picked.
Oh, there is an exhibit.
Red color, but the, the, the top three quarters of the first page is all mine and then the rest is Commissioner King's, so whatever that is, you can see that we, we listed all the roads by, and they provided documents. There's a, there's actually a sketch that goes with these, I didn't put all that because it's done, whatever that is, under thirty-five pages or so. Uh, did detail, um, where we're talking about.
All right, we're going to take the motion on agenda item number fifteen. I'll make a motion to authorize the county judge to execute the road use agreement with the city public service board. If made by Commissioner Martin, signed by Commissioner King. Any other discussion on agenda item fifteen? Here none, I'll call for the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Loses against aye, aye, Sabbath, motion passes.
And I sent, I sent the original because it was pretty very good, like, uh, Mr. Gonzalez should have, uh, seen what he done before.
Agenda item number sixteen, Oregon, my adult election administrator, she is not here, uh, it's just discussed and taken action on exception order for special election of seventeen propositions for the eleventh, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, um, election. And you have all the orders in there, you want to look at them, she just needs approval back to put them on ballot. And you have all the orders in there, you want to look at them, you just need to prove them back to them on ballot.
Lots of propositions.
I'll entertain a motion on item number sixteen. I'll make a motion to accept the order for special election of seventeen propositions for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, has been seconded by Commissioner Hurdle, any other discussion regarding item sixteen? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A little against nay, aye, have it, motion passes. Item number seventeen, we had a blue, so I'll permitting the developer director sub division, number one, subdivision, hidden ranch unit two. One, discuss take action acceptance of dedication and conveyance of road.
Good morning, the final inspection for hidden ranch unit two was conducted by our contracted engineers, well as our commissioner and Gary Lee, my assistant director and the driveway inspector. It passed its final inspection and now the developer, Mr. Ronnie Light, the C, petitioned the court to have his roads conveyed to county.
Commissioner Martin, I have to preach after you.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept dedication, conveyance of road in, in ranch unit two.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion on seventeen, one, eight? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A little against nay, aye, have it, motion passes. Eighteen, County Sheriff, Jim Stewart, Sheriff Paul, this is.
Nothing basic.
Item number nineteen, we have a D, my D, and so the county clerk, discuss and take action on Commissioner Court minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Make. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken, any other discussion regarding item number eighteen?
Aye.
Item number two, we have Mr. Taylor, Department of Human Resource, mess with presentation of payroll and personnel changes.
Good morning. Brad Taylor was hired as a patrol deputy from the sheriff's department, making twenty-five thirty-three per hour, fifty-five thousand three twenty-six thirty-two annually effective August twenty-second. And Rita Bennett has been moved from temporary part-time to full-time with JP One's office, making eighteen ninety-three per hour, thirty-nine thousand three fifty-nine twenty annually effective August first.
Questions, Mark?
Thank you, Matt.
Brad Stevens, Barack Haverstone, from the county. He's military. Retired, I'm military. Might be their grandson. Thank you. You know you can keep your seat, we'll give it to you.
I gave one to the sheriff.
Item number, we have the brighter community county order, discuss take action on bills.
I have reviewed a grand total of invoices to be paid in the amount of six hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Grab whatever you want. I'm looking, I don't have an empty pen in there, but I've got one down in the truck, if you're allergic. Make a motion that we accept the bills as presented by the county order in the amount of six hundred thirty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-one cents and pay them. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Hurdle, is there any other discussion regarding item number fourteen? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Hurdle, all in favor, say aye. Yes, we are in our ten thirty-two.